Good evening. We're so proud of ourselves as a council for being punctual tonight. So, thank you all for being here. Usually, we're stuck in another meeting or something. So, welcome to Town Hall. My name's Jen Daniels. I'm the mayor of the town of Gilbert. And I have this really amazing team. I have my vice mayor, Eddie Cook, council member Bridget Peterson, council member Scott Anderson, council member Amy Yentes, and council member Jared Taylor. I did just notice that we have Jill Humphries here from the Gilbert Schools Governing Board. So, Jill, thanks for being here. Do they miss anybody from Higley or Chandler? Okay, I just wanted to make sure. We are really grateful that you all are here. This is one of our most favorite things that we do because we get to honor the youth of our community. They are the future of Gilbert. It is not lost on us as a council. We do as much as we can to support the youth in our community. We estimate at this point, we have about 80,000 school-aged children in the town of Gilbert. So, it's a huge piece of our population. And when I say it's the future of Gilbert, it's why we all work so hard to make sure that we're bringing jobs to the town of Gilbert. Because we want there to be a future right here in the town for this future workforce that's growing up. So, thank you, and thank you for supporting your kids and bringing them down tonight. We also love our teachers. Every day, I love my kids' teachers. If you are one of our teachers from any of our schools, will you please stand and be recognized? Do we have any of our administration here from any of our schools? Any of the administration? Yep, we have a... It looks like a principal. I can't... Yep, principal raising her hand there. Another one here. All right, yes. We're so grateful for the work that they're doing. It's hard work. It is really hard work. I had the chance to spend a couple of days with my sister in her third-grade classroom in December, and I will pick mayor any day of the week. So, thank you. We want to make sure we recognize those teachers, especially those that filled out the nomination forms. They took time out of their day to do that. And so, I'm looking at you, beautiful girl. Will you come help me? Yeah, do you mind? Sorry, I just like put that on ya. Tell us your name.
I'm Anna.
Anna, what grade are you in?
Fifth.
And what school do you go to?
Patterson.
Patterson, awesome. Okay, it's okay if you don't pick your own teacher's name. But there is a... All the teachers that filled out an application for their students, their names are in here, and they have a gift card. Hold on, where's this one too? Oh, To Sal's Gilbert Pizza, '25, I think, To Sal's Gilbert Pizza. So, we'll give this away to one of the teachers. Will you pick a name for us? Bonus points, though, if you do pick your own teacher. Ms. Byrd from Oak Tree Elementary. Is Ms. Byrd here? All right, we'll make sure she gets this. Thank you so much. Thanks for your help, Anna. We do this really efficiently, and we have... Kelsey. Kelsey, stand up so everybody can see you. Kelsey's going to be our official photographer today. She's going to come right here into this section. And the beauty of this is that the great pictures that she takes with a real camera are actually posted both on Flickr and on Facebook later tonight. So, you will have access to those. But you're also welcome to take your own pictures, and so, don't be shy when it comes time for your child's turn. We have three groups. So, the first group that we do is our elementary schools with the last... With the name of the school being A through J. So, Ashland Ranch Elementary, all the way down to Islands Elementary. We should change that to "I" because there's no J schools in Gilbert. But Ashland Ranch to Islands Elementary. So, if you're an elementary school student and you go to one of those schools, will you please come down? And council member Taylor will show you where to stand. Awesome.
Come on down.
So, what we do is we call each child up individually, and they come stand here, and I get to take a picture with them. And then, we give them a bag and their plaque and everything. So, you'll catch on really fast, and it goes pretty smoothly. Look at these good-looking kids. Awesome. All right, council member Cook. I heard we got pronunciations for you tonight.
You know, tonight, I hopefully will not be embarrassed by you or the other council women on this council. Do you tell the parents they can come down and take pictures?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, let's begin. From Ashland Ranch Elementary, Kinsley Vidalis. All right, from Bridges Elementary, Isabella Capato. Okay. From Burke Elementary, Ashley Bustos Perez. No? From Carroll Ray Ranch Elementary, Kalina Duong. Mayor, you see those boots? See those Gilbert boots? All right, from Christ Greenfield, Lutheran Evelyn Steele. From Coronado Elementary, Alex Tan. We need to get him a smile, mayor. There we go. Right here, mayor.
All right, you guys saw how that worked. Pretty easy. Group 2 is the rest of our elementary school students. We know it's a school night too, and some of us are still recovering from spring break or you're on spring break. So, if you need to leave after your child gets their award, we're not offended, and we'll do a little swap-out. So, send Group 2 down. That's the rest of those elementary school students. And if you need to make an exit, we're okay with that too. So, whatever works.
Pretty easy. Group 2 is the rest of our elementary school students. We know it's a school night too, and some of us are still recovering from spring break or you're on spring break. So, if you need to leave after your child gets their award, we're not offended, and we'll do a little swap-out. So, send Group 2 down. That's the rest of those elementary school students. And if you need to make an exit, we're okay with that too. All right. Fantastic. And again, from Spectrum Elementary, Bailey Marsh. All right, Group 3 is all of our junior high and high school students. All right, mayor, from Campbell Verde High School, Sophia C. Iono. Sisianio. Sorry about that.
Did you get it right?
Close. Very close.
Oh, right here, right here.
Sisiana. I was close. From Cooley Middle School, Mealy Hendrickson. From Leading Edge Early College, Reina Smith. From Mesquite High School, Isa Brown.
Oh my... With all the help I get from my coaching here on the side.
From Mesquite Junior High, William Cooks. We have another Mesquite Junior High, Edward Russell IV. From Payne Junior High, Olivia Davis.
That does conclude our Student-Citizen of the Month. So, thank you all for coming, and we will start our council meeting with the business of our council meeting in a couple of minutes. our council meeting with the business of our council meeting in a couple of minutes. Good evening, welcome to our March 21st Town Council meeting. We have completed our Student Citizen of the Month portion of our meeting and now move to invocation and pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Cook, I mean Vice Mayor Cook, it's all you.
Thank you, Mayor. Could I have Gibson, will you please come down here and join me? We have one scout tonight, Mayor.
That's not just a scout, he has the arrow of light.
Oh my.
That's pretty amazing.
He is very, very special.
Yep, he is.
Can we all rise here in the chamber, and we'll have Gibson lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Gibson. Stand right here next to me, Gibson, and maybe you can tell us what troop you're from.
I am from Troop 322.
Well, fantastic. We actually have a gift for you for coming. It's the, a pocket version of the United States Constitution. So, you take this home, you memorize it when you come back, we'll give you a test. Would that be all right? How about a round of applause for Gibson? Thank you.
Thank you, Gibson, for being here. We'd like to invite Pastor Thor Stranholt from Baller Christian Center to the podium to offer our invocation this evening. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. Mayor Daniels, Vice Mayor, Town Council, again, it is a pleasure to be back with you this evening. Let's pray. Father God, we invite your presence into this session tonight. Thank you for the wisdom of all of those that are here to make the decisions concerning our town. Father God, we honor you, we give you the praise, and we give you the glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen and amen. Thank you.
The clerk will conduct the roll call.
Mayor Jen Daniels.
Here.
Vice Mayor Eddie Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan Ray. Councilmember Jared Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember Amy Yentes.
Here.
The quorum is present.
Thank you. That was Councilmember Ray joining us by phone tonight, so thank you, Councilmember Ray, for doing that. We do, it looks like, have a couple, one request to speak. This is the communications from citizens portion, so anything that's not on our, not on our agenda, but that individual from the community wishes to speak on. Vice Mayor?
Mayor, we do have one individual, Paul Rodriguez. If you could come up to the podium, Paul, and if you can share us your name and place of residence, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council people, good evening. My name is Paul Rodriguez. I'm an advocate for homeless cats and kittens in Gilbert. Let the record show, I've also rescued ducks, birds, you name it, whatever comes to the doorstep. You all should have gotten a, an email from me, very simple proposal. The concerns that were expressed to me regarding the feeding of cats basically seemed to revolve around litter, attracting other creatures, being a nuisance, and so forth. So, my compromise is that, no, if you're going to feed these cats, please measure what you're putting out. Don't put out more than is necessary. It may, it may involve circling back to wherever you're putting this food out and cleaning up if there's anything left. It's hard work. I was up until 3:30 on Monday morning, actually, I guess it was Tuesday morning. I, I trapped five cats in Gilbert, four of them female, three of them were pregnant. One of the cats was pregnant with four fetuses, another one had four fetuses, and the third one had five. Potentially, if those had gone to term, and unfortunately, there is no accommodation for those cats, there's no incubators, there's no way to save those fetuses. But that was, those were 13 kittens that would have been in Gilbert. Mind you, that's just one little spot in this little town. Just imagine how many more are out there that I and nobody else got to. Those kittens have nothing to look forward to, but the heat, hunger, and God knows what else. Now, in the Gilbert Sun, there's an article, their current issue, about a woman in Gilbert who unfortunately claims, Mayor, to be your friend, and she's been a major obstacle to people who've been trying to trap, get these cats spayed and neutered. Unfortunately, Mayor, she bandies your name about, and now she's saying, "Oh, we should close up all these storm drains, so what little shelter these cats and kittens get from the sun and the rain would no longer be available to them." In my solitary opinion, that crosses the line from just being concerned about litter to outright gratuitous cruelty. I personally object to that, and I would find it objectionable that this council and Mr. Carmona would accommodate this individual. It's wrong. I look forward to speaking with you again. You all have my phone number.
Thank you, Paul. Are there any more requests to speak?
Not, Mayor.
Thank you. That moves us to the consent agenda. Vice Mayor?
Mayor, we have, no one on the council is going to pull out the agenda item from the consent, so what I'd like to do is move that we approve Agenda Items 1 through 10 and 4A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Councilmember Ray? You. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. That moves us to our public hearing items. Are there any requests from the council to discuss any of the public hearing items, including 13A? One?
Ben, oh, sorry.
Here, I would like to talk about all of them, actually.
Okay.
11, 12, 13.
All right. We will open the public hearing on Agenda Item 11. Councilmember Taylor?
Take 11 and 12 together if...
Sure. I will open the public hearing on Agenda Items 11 and 12.
12, okay, thank you. Mayor, you know my concern about the protections around our schools and churches. Item 11 talks about liquor license that's very close to a church. It's also been a really great thing in Gilbert to have family-friendly alcohol-free parks. And since this now is a park, now, there's definitely a difference in this park than other parks, but it's still a public park, supported by taxpayer dollars. And it's been a legacy in Gilbert to have family-friendly alcohol-free parks. I'd like to continue that, so I won't be supporting Item 11 on those two bases. Item 12, along that line as well, is very close to a school, and, you know, there's really nothing more substantiated in the research on the influence of young people when they're exposed, and that's why there's 300-foot boundaries, and that's why we give privileges to schools and churches, because the exposure is what has been empirically showed in many, many studies. We could wallpaper this council room with the studies of the, of just the exposure, early exposure, and how that translates down the road into negative social behavior. So, I'm concerned that we're removing too many of the social controls, and I won't be supporting these two items. Thank you for the time.
Any other comments on Agenda Items 11 or 12? All right, I will close the public hearing on Agenda Items 11.
Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item 11 and 12.
Second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 6-1 vote. Thank you. That moves us to Agenda Item 13. I will open the public hearing on Agenda Item 13. Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. So, this item had a couple of revisions, and I know we had an update in a packet. I didn't see the actual updated wording, but the town attorney did provide that in a physical copy, so I want to make sure that it's very clear for the record, the substance of change here. And that's, to my understanding, and I'll have the town attorney confirm this, is the exclusion of schools and churches under these restrictions. Is that your understanding as well, Chris?
Mayor Daniels, Councilmember Taylor, that's correct. The ordinance that's before the council today does not have a reference to schools or places of worship.
And thank you for that. And Mayor, when, when this came up a few months ago, I brought that up, that that would just be an absolute conflict with state law. There's also a federal law that was passed about seven or eight years ago, maybe 10 years ago, that addressed the same thing, which was to make sure that we recognize the important influence of schools and churches in our country. So, there's a federal law that would have been in conflict, or this ordinance would have been in conflict, and I provided that reference to the town attorney as well. And, and there is some concern in, in the United States that cities or towns are trying to make it difficult for churches, schools to proliferate, and small churches don't have a lot of money to fight, and anyways, that's why those protections are in place. And, and again, it's important that we recognize the very positive, important influence, and to make sure that they're excluded, and so that they can have that influence that we need to. So, I appreciate, I appreciate the Town Attorney's Office for excluding those in the ordinance. Now, there's a second part to this that I have some concerns about as well, and the basic impact of this ordinance, it has, for those following online, there's an interest to have economic development around the airport. And to do that, these changes would require additional regulations all the way to Valvista Road on a bunch of other things. We've excluded schools and churches for the reasons stated, but I don't think any of us want to, I think we all want the success of the Gateway Airport, but what I don't want it to do is, I'm concerned that this will have an extra burden on a lot of the other businesses that want to go up, right? The ultimate effect, there's really two effects here. Number one is to notice when a new development goes in that there's an airport here and it's loud, it's noisy, right? Second one is to have a higher, higher level of sound abatement in the windows specifically. And as I briefed with staff on this a few weeks ago, their research says that that was already being done. They, they talked to a local developer that was building lots of neighborhoods, and, and basically that has already, that, that's already a standard, not just in this area, but around the region. And so, I, I questioned them, why, well, why are we adding regulation on things that's already happened? And then, you know, I know we're all pro-business as well, but I, I just think, and then, being, being required to notify that an airport is loud, it's kind of like, it, you know, we need to notice that the sun is shining, and if you're bald like me, then you might get a sunburn on your head, you know? I mean, some things are kind of obvious, and that happens all the time, and builders' offices, when you're going to a development, is, hey, this is loud, there's an airport there, if it's not already so painfully obvious, right? So, I, I just think this is overregulation. I don't think it's necessary. We've talked to the industry, you've seen the statistics, I asked for the statistics, those are so small, because as, as staff noted, 50% of those are redundant, so you basically cut those in half, and it's such a miniscule part of the population surrounding it. I just don't think it justifies all the time and effort we're going to put on businesses to comply with this. And it's also something that we can start to add. Now, I understand other cities and towns think that they can go ahead and regulate schools and churches and others, and I guess they can do that, but I don't want to suppress economic development for really no good reason. And certainly want to promote the airport, that's very, very valuable, probably the number-one economic engine we have in, in the region, and I don't really see that any of this will promote economic development. If anything, it'll suppress it. And I can give you some examples, that the headquarters of a major global, you know, $30 billion company has a building right by Sky Harbor that would not be allowed if this thing was in place. I worked there. I worked there. I could see, it's almost like you could reach out and touch the wings of the airport. And so, they, you know, of course, they would have to get all these exclusions, and we'd have to treat this business with this exception, and that business with that exception, but why, why don't we keep it pro, pro-business and make it easier for them to come in, instead of a little bit more difficult to come in, is, is a big concern that I have. So, happy to get more information from staff on this tonight, but those are some concerns that I have with the wording it is, but definitely appreciate the changes that were made so that we are not in conflict with state and federal law. Mayor, thank you for the time on that one.
Ben, I just want to make one comment, just to clarify what you, you just said. There may be some other communities across the country that may be stifling schools or churches, but that is not happening in the town of Gilbert, and I just want to make that abundantly clear, that we are doing everything that we can within our power to support our faith groups and our schools in the town. And I, I know a lot of us spend a tremendous amount of time, I just didn't want that to be the sentiment that was related after what you said, that was, that is not something that we have done in the town of Gilbert, nor is that something that we are looking to do. something that we are looking to do. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, thank you. And like I said, nationally, I didn't say in Gilbert, although we did have some issues here, that if this was in place, it could easily say, well, look at what happened in 2009 and 2015, and here we go again. That's why I don't want to have, that's why these need to be excluded, because they could be litigated and we'll lose. But we know, like you said, these are valuable. Let's recognize that.
Councilmember Anderson?
Just a couple of things, a couple of thoughts. First is, probably the most important part of this whole thing is the notification. We went through this exercise about 20 years ago, and we filled the Highland High School cafeteria with very angry neighbors who claimed they didn't know anything about noise attenuation and living under the noise contours of the Phoenix, well, what was then the, what was the call back then? Williams, Williams Gateway Airport. And so I think that part of this is extremely important and needs, and I think the staff has done a good job to clarify that, make sure that that is something that's very important. The other thing I wanted to ask, maybe Amy could explain, just to get on record, summarize the issue with the wildlife attractants. Do we have anything like that that falls in the area that they've outlined currently existing, and do we know of anything in the future that may be affected?
Mayor Daniels and councilmembers, thank you. I will pull up the PowerPoint here, and I do have a slide that shows some of the hazards that are identified in the staff report. And I think, I don't have every last one identified as far as water hazards on the map, but... And it doesn't want to go. Okay. It's being difficult. What's the trick? It's not going. Well, what's on the computer is not what's on the screen. This is interesting. Okay, now I've got it listening. I'm just going to do it the old-fashioned way, because technology's not working for me this evening. So I've got this exhibit right here, which shows, and I think Councilmember Anderson is referring to especially the bird attractants, and some of the hazards within the five-mile and the 10,000-foot radiuses. The green lines represent the East Maricopa floodway and canals, and the green dots represent water bodies. And so what the code would require is, it doesn't say that you can't have them. It simply says they're marginally compatible, and they're subject to FAA review. And what that review is, and you can see we have the Rittenhouse Basin, which is now one of our newest parks that is going to be constructed, right in that blue, I'll call it oval. And it's not that you can't have the lake. The airport and FAA just want to review it, so that we don't necessarily have bird habitat or nesting habitats that promote certain species. So there are some easily mitigating efforts that can be done for a design of a water body that helps to mitigate that, and so we don't have bird hazards occurring that close. Most of the others are fairly far out, such as riparian preserves and recharge areas, and even the new water park that we're talking about are within the five-mile separation status. But once again, through review and just some minor adjustments to the design, we can be proactive in helping the airport avoid these potential issues, instead of reactive, which is after the fact, trying to mitigate and alleviate problems, or negatively impacting the economic viability of a major driver in the valley that we've identified. And we support, as I said, on the board of directors. So that is one. And then the others, just go up one page, have to do about flight risks, which are breaking into the flight height levels of the airport during takeoffs and landings, glint and glare, lighting systems. And for the hotel that I had right by the airport on Power Road, it was just a matter of, one, checking the color of the lights, so it didn't reflect the colors of planes and airport landing patterns. And, two, making sure that they were properly directed toward the building as a wall wash instead of upward. Spotlights and other things like that, on a seasonal basis or a special event, would be reviewed by the airport, and just certain comments would be made on how to mitigate any issues. So most of these thermal hazards, electromagnetic interference, they all speak to FAA safety regulations, which are part of the '77 study, Part 77, and they are subject to federal law. So all we're doing is saying, hey, heads up, there's some federal laws that pertain to this. You need to go talk to the airport. It just says, don't build without being aware. And even with our others, with the compatibility matrix and others, it's merely saying, these are some things that are suggested. Some things are not as encouraged. Most of the things that are incompatible are within the area flight overlay one, which we have one acre in our town. And overflight area two, we only have 122 acres. And once again, there's, they're not, most of the businesses we see going in would not fall into that, those categories. But once again, go talk to the airport, make sure FAA law doesn't have an issue, come back, move along. We have not seen them holding up projects. And actually, some of the regulations within our current code are more restrictive than this, because this is allowing for more flexibility. I hope I answered your question.
Yes, just one moment, Councilmember Ray. Councilmember Taylor, you wanted to respond?
Can I just ask a follow-up, Amy?
Certainly.
So when we direct a business to the FAA, because that's, because that's current law right now, whether they talk to us, they still have to comply with all of those regulations, right?
Correct. And we still send them to the airport, and the airport gives them any paperwork they need to fill out for the FAA and any reviews that need to occur. And then we can get a letter of determination back. Some surrounding cities ask for a letter of determination before they'll even do a design review. We work with the applicant during that process to make sure that the airport has input.
So what do you need back from the FAA to move things forward, if any? Maybe you don't.
Pretty much what happens is we send it over the airport, we get a response from the airport administration, and then if there are some mitigation members, measures such as tilting the wall washers 45 degrees, we just condition those, or we work them into the project. So far, it's been very minor comments.
So a business would be held up by the town until the airport responds. What about the FAA response? Because sometimes that'll take four, six weeks, sometimes four, six months, if they have, they have to review a crane schedule or something like that. So what would the town hold up, if anything, in terms of the FAA response, not the airport response?
Most of the time, with the comments that come back, our applicants are fairly willing to make the minor adjustments. And I'm going to use the Temple as an example. Originally, the spire went over 200 feet up into a flight pattern, height limitation, and they lowered it four feet, and then it's fine. So those are the kind of things that occur. We really, with the height limitations we have in Gilbert, it's 66 feet and up along Power Road, we're not really seeing very many projects that tall, so most of it just has to do with light and glare, and they're really minor comments, and the applicants have been very willing to make any flight adjustments.
So, thank you, Amy.
It hasn't held anything up if I didn't answer.
I know it doesn't seem like a lot to you, because you're on that side of the desk, but when you're, when you're building and you have schedules and times, it really is a bigger deal than I think you're making it. And the fact of the matter is, for the council, is the FAA will put a hard stop on this, right? So if anybody goes forward, they'll put a hard stop on it. They actually have more strict rigid regulations than the town does. But what it's going to do is, it's going to stop them from moving forward until they get feedback back from the FAA, and they don't move very fast. So now you have a big delay in the projects. I know Amy doesn't think it's that big, but being in the, in the private sector where you see this, it actually is, and time is money, and people have deadlines, and so that's where you do have economic development suppression and duplicate regulation, because the FAA, that's not changing. It's already there, and our notice of them is really just a phone call or an email, and we're done, and then the private operator can continue to move on. They have to deal with the FAA. So again, there's, there's some concerns there.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray?
The Walmart over on Power Road were to decide to add solar panels on top, FAA could come back and say, no, you can't do that, and you have to pay to take them down. Is that a fair statement?
It is my understanding, Mayor, that that is a fair statement, and Councilmember Jordan, Councilmember Ray, that, yes, the FAA overrides us, and that we're simply directing people to go speak with them. And by not asking for clearance from the FAA prior to and having it done during the process, it doesn't delay the process the way that asking for a letter of clearance from the FAA first, a letter of determination that other cities ask for, would, because then you have to go through the whole FAA process first and then come through ours. We're doing it concurrently, and that's why I don't think it's as much of a timeliness manner as it might be for other municipalities.
And my point to that is, I don't believe that by approving this, we are adding a bunch of new regulations. In fact, we are making it potentially easier for the end user, where we are asking them upfront as part of our process to please go through the FAA, et cetera, et cetera, rather than them building something and coming back and having to tear down a building because it's in the way, and they had not previously talked to FAA.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. We do have one request to speak on this item.
Mayor, we do have one individual, Tony Bianchi. If you can state your name for the record and place of residence, you will have three minutes to speak to the council. On for the record, Tony is in favor of this agenda item.
Tony's here representing the airport, I believe, even though he's also a Gilbert resident.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers.
And so let's not, let's not limit his time on this one. This is one of our partners.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Again, as you stated, my name's Tony Bianchi. I'm the planning manager out at Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport Authority, and as the mayor pointed out, I'm also a resident of Gilbert. Well, again, here we are again, and we want to voice our support for the town's updated airport overlay, and maybe also give a chance to address some of the questions that have been raised, maybe clarify some points and additional questions that councilmembers may have. I should note, Councilmember Taylor, Amy did share with us your request for information. Can everyone hear me okay? We did get this sent out to her late afternoon, but when I touched base with her before the meeting, she said she had never received it, but we have that information for you, what you requested. So I'm not sure the best way to give that to you. I can go over that with you tonight or whatever, but we do have it timestamped, and we tried to respond back to you in a, in a timely manner as well. So really, just kind of want to walk you through this and give you a little background on that. I will try not to be too repetitive with this as well. So... Here we go. Oh, is it? Oh, page down. Okay, not the arrow, page down, apparently. So, so what this has been is, this is really the culmination of multiple years of work to get us to this point. So this overlay that you see tonight is largely based on the airport's updated land use compatibility plan back in 2017. And again, when we did this, this was a public process. So we did not do this in a vacuum. We put together an advisory committee that was made up of town staff. It was made up of town-appointed representatives, as well as stakeholders, including the Home Builders Association. We also held a series of meetings on this topic as well. So what I think it's important to do is talk about and discuss the intent of the plan and the updated overlay. So the first one is updating the 65 and 60 DNL planning noise contours. So the last contour update that we went through was back in 2000. So since that time, anybody that lives near the airport knows, there's been a lot more overflight activity, but there's a lot newer aircraft that are more efficient, that really that sound footprint has been reduced. So the contours and the more restrictive overflight areas one and two, which are associated with those contours, with this update have been greatly reduced within Gilbert. Amy talked about it. It's down to, I think, AOA one is one to two acres, and I think the other one, I forget the number, it's in your staff report as well. The other thing is, this meets state statutes. So as a public airport, we have to disclose our areas of influence, as well as our noise contours. So this update helps address that as well. And if we don't update this overlay, those larger noise contours with those more restrictive boundaries, those are going to remain. The second is, we want to protect the airport, and we want to protect the investments that have been made in the airport. So as you're well aware, Gilbert is a part-owner in Gateway Airport, and really, we look at this overlay as an insurance policy in your investment, to your investment. It protects the airport, it protects our capacity, protects our operations, and it also helps us meet FAA grant assurances in regards to compatible land use planning. Now, again, one of the things that was talked about is, the airport itself has no land use regulatory authority. So our coordination with local governments is key. Now, my understanding as well, because it was talked, to the point that Amy was talking about, is the FAA won't forbid you to build it. So they can issue a determination of hazard, which the towns can still permit and issue the building permits, and as a result, if there's an airspace penetration or a hazard that's created, we as the airport have to deal with those ramifications. So that could be a change to our operations. It could change to maximum takeoff weights, aircraft that are serving different runways. So, you know, the FAA doesn't, they'll tell you whether it's a hazard or not, but they can't forbid you from, from doing that. The other thing is, we want to plan for the controlled growth of the airport. So we talked about, councilmembers have mentioned, the economic opportunities, whether it's passenger operations and economic growth at the airport. Right now, we have about 300,000 annual operations, so each one of those is a takeoff and a landing. What that represents is over a 50% increase in airport operations just in the last five years. So we also have capacity to accommodate additional growth as gateway as well. So this was very much a data-driven plan, and we wanted to make these boundaries that we're presenting to you less subjective. The factors that we analyzed, there were a number of them when we recommended the updated boundaries in Gilbert. And a lot of these factors we noticed is that were already occurring. They weren't something that we were projecting out. We noticed through those trends that those were occurring now. So from the airport's perspective, we really felt we had a duty to disclose that to the member communities as well. And finally, and I think this goes to the economic development considerations, is we want to make applicants aware of these considerations very early in the development process. So we understand that many developers and landowners, they're not familiar with developing around an airport. And we don't expect your planning staff to become aviation experts as a result. But having these updated boundaries, having your updated land use matrix, and these flight safety considerations included, we believe provides a very good reference for, based on that project location. The other thing is, we want to be able to make applicants aware of this during pre-application or pre-submittals. So we think this results in an actual process improvement, because when they initially come in, they have information that staff can share with them right out of the gate before an application is even filed. We believe that helps avoid any project delays, if that's addressed early enough as well. So just a few items to note in this. A lot of them are in your staff report. From the airport's plan, the noise-sensitive uses that are included, they have not changed in this. Now, from the airport's perspective, hearing the talk about schools and churches, we would prefer that schools and religious facilities remain as a noise-sensitive use in the LDC. That's the way you currently have it. It's in the airport's plan. It's also in adjacent communities ordinances, as well as FAA guidance. However, we do understand that the town could still permit that or condition these uses as you see fit. But we, I think we would agree that churches and schools are a noise-sensitive use if you're trying to worship in a learning, in a learning environment as well. Also, we also realize that we have expanded the overflight area three greatly. And really, that's primarily, the focus is on disclosure, and making these buyers aware of that airport activity right at the start. So we have removed the request for navigation easements in that expanded AOA three, and we think from the airport, we're just better served in getting that disclosure notification that Councilmember Anderson talked about. The flight safety factors that you see, those are a key addition for the airport. The flight safety factors that you see, those are a key addition for the airport in this. Previous plans that we looked at just addressed noise. This is the first time we've actually incorporated those flight safety considerations. Amy talked about the Part 77 and that preservation of airspace, because if this is not included in the overlay, how would it be known to applicants that this needed to be evaluated if we didn't do that early on? So, in kind of summary, we do, we have a very good working relationship with your staff. However, we also want this to be a strategic partnership, meaning between the airport, between the town, as well as the development community too. We want to allow orderly development, and we want to be able to capitalize on the airport's continued economic success and potential. So with that, I will, I will wrap up and ask you to follow the lead of the Airport Board, the unanimous recommendation that your Planning Commission gave this, this overlay, as well as the Gilbert Chamber's support, and vote to approve this updated language. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any additional questions you may have. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Tony. Appreciate your willingness to be here tonight. Questions for Tony? I don't sit on the Airport Board anymore. Councilmember Ray does that on behalf of the town, but I will tell you that airport activity is increasing, I think, daily. I know ABLE Engineering is undergoing an expansion now. We have, I think, five airlines now operating out of Phoenix Mesa Gateway.
That's correct.
Which is pretty incredible to know that. There are a lot of businesses being built right now on the Mesa side that are, I think, in AOA two, and still are quite large and substantial, and a lot of, looks like light industrial-type spaces that are being built there. And so I see a lot of growth still happening. I will tell you, from my experience, when I did serve on the Board, we monitored the noise complaints every single Board meeting. If I'm being honest, much to my dismay, I didn't really want to spend time going through all those numbers, but when an issue did come up, and it did on a very regular basis, particularly in different neighborhoods, there would be sort of an uprising from a neighborhood. The Bridges Development was one of those neighborhoods that came forward and was very upset because they had not been notified about the airport, and they were far enough away where I think they believed that it would not impact them in any way. So I would absolutely agree with you, Tony, and with Councilmember Anderson about the notification. I think from a council perspective, we can relate to it as it relates to railroad crossings. We think people would know that we have lots of railroad crossings in the town, and that means that we're going to hear train horns now and again, but we still get complaints and concerns about train horns and timing, just like we probably always will about the airport. I will note that some of the noise calls that we got at the airport were curiosity about the type of airplane, because maybe they saw something they hadn't seen before, or there was something unique, but those still came in as noise concerns or noise complaints, and they had to be documented as such. And all that documentation is not only held by the airport, but they do have to send that over to the FAA. They have to report that data and that information, and they even track how many repetitive callers and others. So we do try to make sure that we're being a good neighbor at the airport at all times, recognizing that it is a growing airport with growing needs and with a lot of economic development activity. So I, I'm very much supportive of this. I'm not offended by the idea that we notify more people rather than less people that there's an airport there. Maybe that'll spur some economic development too. So, I make all those statements, and if there's any other questions or concerns by the council? Councilmember Ray, you serve as our liaison. Did you want to make any final comments?
No, I, I don't, Mayor, other than I support this and appreciate all that the airport does to help benefit the town of Gilbert.
Thank you. All right. With that, I will close the public hearing on Agenda Item 13 and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item 13 as it's revised, that we received.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. That motion carries with a 5-2 vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
That moves us to Agenda Item 13A. I will open the public hearing on Agenda Item 13A. Are there any questions or concerns from the council?
Mayor, I have a list of the people that we would like to.
This is just the code change for the qualifications. But we will get there, that's 14.
Mayor, I do want to make a comment on this, and I really appreciate talking to Chris about this. This is actually a really important change in our, in our code as it relates to really allowing the flexibility to have, you know, an individual possibly seeking employment. So an example would be one of the current Supreme Court, Arizona Supreme Court justices that wants to apply for a position who's extremely qualified, unfortunately could not apply for this position in Gilbert, which is shocking. So this apply, this allows a lot more, larger pool, more flexibility for very qualified individuals if they wanted to become a presiding judge in Gilbert.
Thank you. I will close the public hearing on Agenda Item 13A and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item 13A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That takes us to administrative items, Agenda Item 14.
My turn now, Mayor.
Thank you.
Please. Mayor, I have a list of the town of, the members that we would like to appoint to the Town of Gilbert Judicial Selection Committee. That list, that committee would include Vice Mayor Eddie Cook, Judge James Bean, Heidi Davis, Jolene Fleck, Julie Graham, Ben Mitsuda, Jessica Nicely, Les Presnick, Judge Matthias Tefoya, and Adam Walterson.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote as well. Thank you. Boards, commissions, and committee reports from the council? Seeing none, we will move to future meetings and a report from the town manager on current events.
Mayor, members of the council, just want to wish our Public Works Director, Jessica Marlowe, happy birthday. Today is her birthday, but under advice from legal counsel, I will not mention her age, but we appreciate Jessica and all the great things she does for our town.
She's celebrating at a council meeting tonight. Jessica, we hope you have a really good weekend. All right, thank you. Report from council on current events?
Mayor, I have two things. I was remiss in not mentioning the annual night at the museum at the, at HD South a couple of weeks ago. It was a great event, a great annual event that I think so many of us like to attend, and their biggest fundraiser for the year, and we were really just pleased to be part of it again, and looking forward to seeing what they do next year since we'll be celebrating our centennial. I know that it'll be something quite fun, I, I think. And the other thing that I wanted to bring up was, Friday evening, I attended the Gilbert Symphony Orchestra. And I didn't know anything about the Gilbert Symphony Orchestra. Kayla and Jo, Kayla Kohler and Joan Kruger invited myself and my husband along, and I sat behind Gail Dish, who was just tickled pink because she has been trying to plan this, along with John Lewis for many years, and thanks to the Parks Department for putting an open call out for people to come and be part of that symphony. And Higley Center for Performing Arts was really packed with people. It was a really great event, and I learned from Denise Merton that they can use that facility best during spring and fall break, so I would expect a concert possibly this fall and October, and then one for next spring. And I, I encouraged maybe playing some songs from 100 years ago in the spring to celebrate our centennial, so that would be awesome too. So thank you.
Terrific, thank you. Yes, that was one of John Lewis's maybe last requests before he left the mayor's office, was to make sure that we saw that to fruition, so I'm grateful for Marty also, who leads that group as a volunteer, and all the individuals who participate in that. So thanks for mentioning that, and thanks for attending. I was out of town, I wished I could have gone. Terrific. I do have a few updates on current events. We have the East Valley Mayor Prayer Breakfast, where all nine East Valley mayors come together next Wednesday. The event will be held here at Gilbert Civic Center. We are the hosts this year, and we're really grateful to all the sponsors who have assisted with that. So Valerie also has been making that happen, along with lots of volunteers, and our chair this year is Joel Biggs, so we're really grateful for all of their efforts to see this happen. And our theme is Fabric of Hope, which is what we believe the faith groups are for our community and the beneficiary for the proceeds from the event. It's all paid for, not with taxpayer dollars, it's all based on sponsorships, and the proceeds will go to Winged Hope as they help those who are victims of abuse. So I'm really excited about that event next week. Also, this Saturday is the Kapow Superhero Run. I don't see, oh, Robert's over there. We're really excited about that. Freestone Park, I think we might be sold out. Yes, we are, that is true. But really fun and a great event for everyone. And I was, also had on my list, a happy birthday to Jessica from the council, so we're thankful for you and all your efforts. You have a great department, and you are a great leader, so thank you. With that, I think the meeting is adjourned. Have a good night.